She's looking at you. She's looking at you.
I'll leave it down here for you.
I didn't reckon you had myself either, actually.
We're going to call this board meeting, Lord. Opening session prayer will be given by Mitch Stonecifer, pledge of allegiance to my German, and Sis' field rise.
Today's flag was just coming for you, and we thank you for all the things that you do for us in our lives. But we want to take this opportunity, ask that you put a hedge of protection around our students, our teachers, our faculty, and leadership. But we ask that you protect those who drive the students. We ask that you protect those who teach the students. Lord, we ask that you lead God and direct this group of men and women at the head of this table, Lord. We ask that you give us the direction that will be fitting in your eyes and in your judgment. We just give you the thanks in Jesus' precious name, Lord. Amen.
Place the flag.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, consider approval of the ministry July 12, 2022 meeting. Motion by Rick Dodson, second by Wayne Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Number five, any additions or deletions to proposed agenda? We'll go on to six. Approval of the August 9, 2022 meeting agenda. Motion, so moved by Mitch Stonecifer, second by German Hicks. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? We don't have anything under executive action. We'll move on to consent. Items, we'll do all three of these at once. Number one, letters of resignation from the following: Bruce Land, Brenda Watkins, Carla Long, Ballard Roberts, Jamie Higgins, Laura Masters, Marcy Parsons, Teresa Thurman, Fran Coleman, and J.C. Hammond. All these were in the attachment that was sent to you. Number two, fiscal year '22 Kinder Boost Grant original budget. Number three, fiscal year '22 Kinder Boost Grant revision one. Those were also in the attachment sent to you. Entertained motion to approve. Considered then. Motion by Mike Gilpatrick, second by Miss Alice Reed. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Under new business, number one, consider approval of increased fuel reimbursement rate. And this was the reimbursement rate for the school trips and the after-school program. Obviously, with gas prices went up, then just the increase went up, that way the trips, and we get a bigger reimbursement from after-school for the gas as well. I think Dr. Holman said it was going to go, it was fifty cents, play on the safe side, and went to a dollar. That way, if gas prices go down, he has the flexibility to move it down. But if gas prices go up, he's got the flexibility to go up to that dollar rate to cover within fluctuations of gas prices. Diesel. Gas diesel. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Alice Reed, second by Mitch Stonecifer.
William Abston?
Yes.
Dolfus Dahl?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Charman Hicks?
Yes.
Bruce Hudgens?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
And Lane Taylor?
Yes.
Ten, four, zero, opposed. Motion passes.
Item number two, consider approval of Rickman Elementary to move excess dirt pile from the parking lot to spread on the playground. This will be no cost to us. They just want the approval to move the dirt pile. The school's going to pay for the seat and straw, and this is going to be done during a community cleanup event they're going to do down there, so. Entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Wayne Taylor. Second by Rick Dodson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Under special recognition, number one, recognize Tucker Pendergrass, 4-H archery.
This is Nicole Marrero. She's our 4-H agent. Come on ahead.
Come up there.
We're good luck. She's going to talk for just a minute about Tucker, and I would say one more.
Okay. My name is Nicole Marrero, and I am a 4-H agent. You can tell by my voice. I have been involved in Overton 4-H for the last seven years. We have a second full-time agent, Ms. Alyssa Anderson, who started in June, and we want to thank the school board for their generous support of the 4-H program and all of the school's support of the 4-H program. I've had the pleasure of knowing Tucker Pendergrass and his family since I first started in Overton County, and Tucker has, number one, always been a gentleman. So when I worked on it with him for 4-H camp, starting at 4-H camp for fourth through sixth grade, I could always count on Tucker to follow the rules, be where he says he's going to be, hold other people accountable, and I just always really admired Tucker for that. He's also been an outstanding public speaker, so even, it was like a habit that Tucker would get an injury every single time the speech contest was going to happen, and he'd still come in, even in a sling in his arm, and still participate in whatever ways that he could. He found a way, a will and a way, to do everything that he could in 4-H. And so when we started, under Coach Derek Zachary, the 4-H archery program, you know, he was one of the first people to sign up, always placed in the top. As he entered high school, as you might have seen his face, involved in other stuff. You know, he's the angler, he is on the baseball team, and he exceeds academically. 4-H is another thing that he has added onto his list. So he might not be able to be at practice all the time because we practice after school, but he has always found time to practice on his own. His family has always found ways to update us on the program. I also have a sec, after our first year in archery, we had Coach Hector, who's in the back. He has also helped mentor Tucker through this. So his success, I play very little role in that. The success is all on Coach Derek, Coach Hector, and unofficially, his dad. So his dad is a big supporter of his. So he went to the National Archery Competition in June in Nebraska. It is not a cheap thing. He had, you know, I'm sure his family forked up a chunk of change, and I know that Will Mullins helped support him, and the construction, Pendergrass's construction also helped back him with over $700 in donations. He had a practice on his own. He placed at a jamboree the previous year. That's where anybody can go, they pay to come. Then they invite a certain amount of younger members to then go to the state invitational. That's high school only, it's in the fall, so then he plays again at that. And then he got to go on to the Nationals where his team placed fifth in the 3D, right? In the 3D shoot. And it wasn't easy for that either. He had to face 20 to 30 mile-per-hour winds while he's outside, very unfamiliar territory in comparison to Tennessee. So he really, you know, defied the odds with being able to be at that competition and just greatly succeed. So we just wanted to recognize you, and I know the Board of Education also wanted to recognize you.
I'd like to say one word or two. Well, I'd just like to reiterate what Nicole has said. I've known Tucker his whole life, and he's a well-rounded gentleman. He's good academics, good athletics, and he's just a very polite gentleman. And this is the kind of gentleman that we want to praise in our school system. And here's just a little something from us, the school board, to you. Ms. Jennifer, did you snap us a picture?
I will.
Can I invite his coach up here and watch you try us?
Come on, coach. He wants to make everybody work Luke short tonight.
All right, moving on. Recognition of board members, Dolfus Dahl, at one board member, Dolfus Dahl, Mike Gilpatrick, and Bruce Hudgens. I think Dr. Holman's got something for you. Mr. Gilpatrick, Mr. Dahl, Mr. Hudgens, I thank you all for your years of service. I know, Mr. Gilpatrick, Mr. Dahl, Rockwell educators, administrators. Administrator, supervisor, these two members, Director Scumbles. Bruce, thank you for your.
I don't think I deserve being the cannonball. I've gone at their home life to this school.
Dolfus was a former, my coach too, former coaches.
How many years combined are we talking about here?
Ninety-eight.
You got Bruce, you got a hundred.
What's that?
All three of you got a hundred years combined.
I'd like to say we so appreciate all the many years of service that you've worked for the school system and the years that you've served on the school board. We appreciate all that you've done for all the students and the whole community.
Thank you.
I got it.
Okay, on three. One, two, three. Two more. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Appreciate it.
Bruce? Come on up.
Bruce, we have you on something. We can't thank you enough for what all you've done. You stepped up in a very trying time, and we appreciate all that you've done to help the students and the whole community. So here's just a little something.
And I want to say that I think I texted everyone the other day, but it's been an honor and a privilege.
Appreciate you. Then OCDA recognition, Mr. Jennifer Holland.
Well, that's a real tough act to follow. Just want to report that school is off and rolling in the whole county. As far as I have heard, everything's going pretty smoothly. Every year seems to be a new learning experience for us since COVID. We don't really know what we're going to see when we get there, but so far, we're looking more normal, and we're hoping we're going to stay more normal. And on behalf of the teachers, we'd love to thank Mr. Gilpatrick and Mr. Dahl for all your years serving the county and the students and the teachers in every capacity that you have. And Mr. Hudgens, thank you so much for stepping into your dear, sweet, late-wife's spot at the spot and carrying the torch the rest of the way for her. Thank you so much.
That's everything on the agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rick Dodson, second, second by Bruce Hudgens. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Assuming y'all want to go straight into the work session. Item number one on the work session, safety update, first portion, door scanning process. Mr. Brent Thresher.
So Dr. Holman asked me to come and speak to the board about the possible decisions we have for just one measure in helping ensure that security works. One of the solutions that Dr. Holman had spoke about in one of the supervisor meetings was a, I don't recall the name of it, Dr. Holman, if you mind helping me there.
I don't remember the brand, the actual brand. I can't remember that either. But anyway, let me paraphrase this. The brand was able to come in and make us one. So instead of having to pay for the large price, we're going to develop, he developed the app that goes along with it, and the brand will sure appreciate all that you've been working on.
Yeah, and from what I understand, it was a kind of just a basic system to where they had an app where they scanned doors, they had like a barcode. It was, I think they were primarily geared towards correctional facilities and things like that. And so they were adapting it for education for security concerns. Anyway, so there would be a barcoded door, they would scan it with a device, and then that would log that the door was checked at a certain point in time. And so I just felt like we could probably build something like that. And I wanted to show you all what that looks like real quickly. I'm trying to get my phone to show up here on the screen. I believe I can do this. Now, show you what the app looks like. But so my idea was to use what we have as called Power Apps, and we use this for inventory management. So it's just a platform as part of our Microsoft 365 where we can build applications, and it's fairly easy to do. But so my idea was to have the application where it would scan this little chip. This is called an NFC tag. So it's similar to like Apple Pay or something like that, where you can take, you know, scan with your phone and pay at a register or whatever. So this has just an ID in, you know, programmed to it. It's a unique ID. So we would have one of these at each door. And then so an SRO officer or someone at the school could go around to each of these perimeter doors, check that the door is secure, and then they would scan this QR, I'm sorry, not QR code, NFC tag. So on the app, they would just press scan, they hold their phone up to it, and then it will show up at the top. And I still need to adjust some of this, but here in the text you can see this is the war room fire exit, so we're just pretending it's that door over there. They walk over, scan it, and then is this door secure? So if they hit yes, then it's going to just log it, and they would have to check. If it has this exclamation mark, that means that that door's not being checked. And, you know, more than two hours, we could set that to whatever frame room we want. But if it has been checked, then we'll see the last time that door was checked in this list. That's something that the principal can see as well, or, you know, whoever at the building level. But let's say that they scan a door, and that door is not secure, and so they say no. So then, this is one of the requests of the SRO officers. They said, well, if it's not secure, can we do something to document that? So that way, we can come back and say, well, this door was not secure for the past three weeks on, you know, whatever days. And so integrated a camera function, so they could just pull that up to the door, they could take a picture and say, okay, well, here's a rock or something that was used to pop open that door. That puts that into attachments for this specific record that gets submit. And then they can then proceed to secure the door and then scan the door again, and then mark it as secure. And then so then they can move on to the next door and work their way around the framework of the building. That just, it gives us a way to document that these doors have been checked, and we have a record to go back to if there is some sort of instance where maybe it's been popped open or there's an issue with it where it won't log, and we may just forget it and so forth. So just kind of a basic idea, but hopefully that's just something that is a tool that we can use to help make sure our schools are more secure. Any questions, I guess.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thresher.
I'd just like to say that I knew Brent was going to go on to great things when he was in the fourth grade. Just a little bit.
I assume on there, when they do take pictures showing that it's not secure, is it going to send it to the principal of the school or somebody that can go and talk to whoever's door that is?
Yeah, we could set it up to where it would sound like a notification through an email to that principal.
I'd like to say that I really appreciate this because as a former principal of a small elementary school, this was always a great concern, the safety, and so I really appreciate this. And I happened to be at Wilson the other day and watched Officer Connetz, or I believe it was, go around and check all the doors. And I really appreciate what you're doing.
Any other questions, sir?
I've got, I hope you have. Before we implement this type of process, now Brent, this isn't going to infringe on any type of property rights or anything that could get us in some type of legal squabble as part of the whole law.
Oh, no, I mean, this is something I built from the ground up. I mean, the general idea is similar to that application, but it's not a copy of their property.
Trump, he could develop the app himself, which thoroughly impressed him, that he built the app and everything.
We might need him to sign something that he won't go on to start him with his app and leave us.
Or if you do, it has to be like free for overgangs.
Any other questions for Brent?
Thanks, Brent.
Portion B of that is, I know last meeting we talked about having conversations to ensure that the door scan was part of the SRO contract. I mean, I don't think they'd do an issue, but have you had discussions?
Yeah, and I've talked to several other districts about some other SRO contracts. I still need to look at some of those more, but there may be some other parts of those that we might want to look into and possibly incorporating as part of our exploit.
And I know the safety meetings, I think a couple of SROs are involved in that safety committee as well. But if there's any issues, just. And C, just a reminder, everybody knows schools make sessions, so just for the public, you know, if a school bus stops, you have to stop both ways. Just be safe, loving and unloving kids. Just a safety reminder there. So. Number two, occupational therapist pay scale. I know we brought this up when we moved everybody else up. We asked Dr. Holman to kind of do some research on that. He had done some research and looked at several, several counties around us. The only county that has an occupational therapist, and correct me if I'm wrong, is Putnam County. Everybody else doesn't. They contract that service out, and that contract is charged through their insurance company. So Dr. Holman's going to do some more research between now and the next couple of months and just kind of, kind of research that a little more before we kind of talk about that anymore. Is that correct?
I think that's correct.
Any other questions on that one? Number three, the LA football stadium update. So this afternoon, I was over there. I think Bruce and Mitch came by and looked at the progress that's been made. I put this in everybody's packet as well. This is a contingency money kind of update on where we stand on the contingency. As of right now, the last meeting we was at in July, there's another meeting next Wednesday in LA at 10 o'clock, if anybody homes to 10, with the contractors and the architect. The last update, the phase one portion, the bleachers, the scoreboard had been loaded, anticipated to be completed August 22nd. That's only four days before the first game. So Coach Flats went ahead and moved the first game to tag, just to be safe. The two games after that, schedule the way anyway, and our first home game after that's not until September 16th. So that gives us ample amount of time in case there's a hiccup that runs here and there. So the steel beams are up for the home visitor bleachers. If you're not drove by that, recommend you drive by and look. It looks pretty impressive. Consider how big those bleachers look. They've got the concession stand, the lockup. They're starting to work on the second floor, which will be the weight room. The Hall of Fame wall is up. The ticket booth is up. They've got a lot of steps and handicap ramps poured for concrete. Phase two, still got a lot of work to go. There's been a lot of work being done already. So if you may got any questions, just call me. You know, I'll answer those. But then I wanted to share this with everybody. When we approved the bid, we put $350,000 in contingency. That way, in case anything come up here and there, and you can look and see. You know, there has been a few things come up. Concrete toss went up from the bed price to the time we actually ordered them. There was freight on the scoreboard that we didn't account for. Had to relocate a gas line. Irrigation upgrades, those are things, like the sprinkler system was tore up. We didn't know, but Steve Mosley had asked that we look at that, so we went ahead and did that while they were over there doing the project. But as of right now, you see, we still were about $191,000 to the good. So knock on wood, hopefully nothing else comes up between now and phase two being done. But I just want to get everybody updated on where that contingency money's been spent so far on that. Any questions on that? All right, number five, building program tentative schedule. So as of right now, I put this copy in there as well. September 8th, if everybody's good with that date, we'll go visit Rickman and Wilson, just like we did last year. And Dr. Holman, if you would, get with the principals to let them know these dates. So we'll do the 8th at Rickman and Wilson, the 19th at Allen's at Hillham, the 27th at LMS and A H, then October 3rd at LA at Reach. And similar to like the last time we did it in 2018, once we compile all that data, we'll come back, we'll kind of separate what maintenance can do, take that off the list, then we'll discuss a list of what, you know, we need architects involved with, and we can add them to build us a building program plan like we have did in the past. So we'll start on September 8th. If anybody has any ideas, I know Mr. Gilpatrick talked to me about additional classrooms at Hillham, additional classrooms at Rickman. You know, those are going to be kind of priority than any principals. They go ahead and start. You would let them know if they've got wish lists to kind of get out there. This is the time to get it on the wish list as we start making these plans, so. That's up to you. Y'all. If anybody needs a ride to Rickman or Wilson, just call or recommend. We can meet at Rickman and drive up to Wilson or whatever, so. Any other questions on that?
Somebody sent these dates.
Oh, yeah, I skipped that one. I'm sorry. So JR OTC update. So I talked to Ms. Looper at the high school, Mandy. Last conversation I think we had, there was a retired officer from Tennessee Tag, Lieutenant Colonel Bryan, that was going to retire, live in Rickman. He was going to come up to do our JR OTC program. He went and got us approved through Fort Knox. Since then, there's some things come up with him. He said it'd take another year. Mandy has called. The colonel lived Fort Knox, since he's not going to be our guy, and the colonel's told her that, hey, I told you you're approved, you're still approved. So we have until school starting of 2023 to get everything in place. So we're still on the list, ready to go. I'm going to ask her if we need to, because that's two positions that we'll have to start looking for, a retired officer and a retired non-commissioned officer. So I'm going to ask her if she's good with us putting that on the September agenda because it's new positions that we'll have to pay half salaries for. We'll need to approve those positions. So I'll ask her if next month's good for her, for us to do that, and then we'll start the search. If they can go ahead and hire somebody, bring them in the high school, start getting their space ready, start getting curriculum ready, uniforms, they start doing all that work between now and August. You can start talking to kids about the program for next year or so. Everybody's good with that. Sorry, I skipped that one. Sorry, I skipped that, please.
Mitch just noticed that you can come on September 8th. The visits to Rickman and Wilson, that is the Paul District meetings. And it's starting to be at 4:30, the events together, they really want for us to go to the Paul District meetings and support other counties. Just recall it. But we're talking 4:30 in the White County, we'll let you know.
Does anybody have an issue moving Rickman and Wilson to Monday, the 12th?
Yes, on Monday.
On Monday for you? Tuesday, the 13th, will I have your board meeting?
Yes.
Can't do that. You can't do this, these church. So let's go back to September 6th.
On Saturday.
It's on Tuesday. About September 6th? Everything going on September 6th? Everybody good with September 6th?
Nice.
Doc? Y'all good with September 6th?
Yep.
So we're gonna move Rickman and Wilson to September 6th, 5:00 PM. We'll meet at Rickman first. All right, thanks for bringing that up. All right, you got anything? Uh, have you got anything?
It's a bit of a privilege to serve a 48-year-old student.
German?
William? Just like thank everybody for all the service, but my, Dolfus, great, appreciate what they've done.
Love you, Mr. Allen. We appreciate it. Take it on first. You good?
I'm good.
We appreciate it. Wayne? Miss Alice?
Appreciate you.
Mitch?
I'm good. Well, I can bet you I was actually gonna thank everyone for their service and glad to make lifelong friends with you.
You good? All right, that's it. Deletes, I didn't hear.